Uh, zoning board of adjustments meeting. It's Monday, October the 7th, 2024, and it is, uh...
One thirty-eight.
One thirty-eight. All right, we're gonna get started, and I need to establish a quorum. We have a quorum here. We do. We can move on from there. And, uh, how many do we have? One, two, three, four, five, six. Six of us are here today. And y'all wouldn't believe how much we get paid to do this. I mean, it's just absolutely... Oh, I won't have to work for another six months after that, will I? Okay. All right, let's see. Uh, meeting's been called to order. Oh, we're gonna put the public comment up first. Do we have anybody that wants to do item number two here called, uh, public comment? If you do, please step up. Uh, some rules have changed, policies and stuff, and so it might be a good idea for staff. Uh, there's a timer. We have three minutes for public comment. And, uh, while I wait for people to come up for public comment, I gotta back up and go establish... Establish, uh, the minutes of, uh, uh... No, that's item three.
Yeah.
Wow. Doesn't look like there's any public comments, so I'll move on to item... Aaron?
Correct. There's no one signed up today for just public comments, uh, but that is a new process that the city council has implemented, that, uh, board meetings, they will... Citizens will have an opportunity to sign up for public comment, which could be on anything outside of the agenda, or they can sign up for an item or more on the agenda if they chose to. And our city staff will be keeping track of that, and then we'll let you know in each case if there are citizens that have signed up to, uh, talk during the public comment of a case or the general public comment for the board.
Thank you, Aaron. Does the board have any questions on that? Some things have changed. Okay.
The last thing, I would just remind just everybody, when you have an opportunity to speak, please speak into your microphone so they can catch, uh, the recording. Uh, there are folks that do actually watch this from home, and then we utilize it as we try to go back and look at the minutes and make sure that we captured everything that, uh, was your intent, uh, in the meeting as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Okay, item number three. We'll move on here to item three. Review and take any action related to minute records of the regular meeting held Monday, August 5th, 2024.
Move approval.
Have a motion to... Have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion on it? There being none, I'll take the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries six zero. Item number four. ZBA twenty-four dash twenty-nine, twenty-four eighty-eight Culver Avenue, single-member district number five, Karen Hesse Smith. Request for approval of a variance to allow a five-foot front yard setback in lieu of the required twenty-five feet for a carport structure in the single-family residential RS1 zoning district.
Thank you, Austin Reed Planner. This request comes to you out of the ASU College Hills neighborhood. We are in district number five, Karen Hesse Smith's district. Uh, zoning for this property is RS1, single-family residential. Uh, the property is point one-six-four acres, and as mentioned, we have a request for approval of a five-foot front yard setback in lieu of the required twenty-five feet for a carport structure. We did mail out thirty-five notices. Four of those were returned in favor. Uh, four were opposed. The opposition didn't like the idea of a carport and wanted to uphold the building setback regulations. Onto our analysis, the carport's already constructed. It's there. Uh, the applicant's contractor didn't obtain permits or anything that they required when they found this out. They did approach the city and began to ask for a variance. Um, unfortunately, there doesn't appear to be any special circumstances peculiar to the land that would justify a variance. Um, it's a very typical lot with typical measurements, typical setbacks. Additionally, a vast majority of the surrounding neighbors, uh, do abide by the front setback requirements, and there was a clean building line across the block face. Um, so, like I'm... Like I said, staff weren't able to find all necessary criteria for granting a variance have been met. I have included some photos. Uh, you can see it's constructed out of wood with a metal roof. And it's mostly flat. It might have a little bit of a pitch to it. I've also included here an old survey with some basic measurements as well. Uh, with that, we are recommending denial. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
I have one. What's that? What's that extra ten-foot thing in the front?
That's just the amount of rideaway between the property line and the street.
So, the... What you're looking for is five feet from the property line, not five feet from the street?
Correct. Yeah, fifteen feet from the street, about. Thanks, Ray.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Reed? I have one that, of course, it didn't get a permit, correct?
Correct.
It's not in the overlay zone?
No, sir, it's not.
What's the code for a carport? Like, if you were to apply for a permit, what is the restriction?
So, they have to follow normal building setback regulations, so it... Um, if they're not within the open structure overlay zone, they, of course, have to be the twenty-five feet back. If they're within the open structure overlay zone, they can be within five feet of the front property line, provided it's at least ten feet away from the curb.
Okay.
So, if this were in the open structure overlay, they would meet that setback requirement. I'm not sure if they would meet the design requirements.
That's a different story. Is there any other carports in the area?
Not that I've noticed. There seemed to be one a block over, and it was pretty old.
So, explain the part about the overlay zone.
Sure. So, the open structure overlay is a zone over a certain part of the city. Um, within that zone, um, substantially open structures such as carports are allowed to encroach into that front setback. They don't have to follow that twenty-five feet. They can be five feet away from the front property line instead. Um, like I said, that only applies to what we would call a substantially open structure like a carport.
So, i... But if they were in the overlay zone, they would be compliant?
Um, from the setback side of it, yes. Now, we do have design criteria for carports as well. They have to blend into the house. They have to have a pitch to them, um, some other additional regulations. But that five feet, it would follow, yes.
More questions?
So, is the variance just for the setback, not the design?
Correct. Yes.
So, if the variance was approved, they'd have to still fix the design. Is that correct? I mean, it would come back to you. That would be part of it. Is that correct?
Is that only for the open structure overlay, or is that in general?
Correct. If it... Since this is not in the open structure overlay, there's not a design criteria for carports outside of that. It's just the setback is at the twenty-five-foot mark. Um, that's why most carports are either behind that, built in the backyard off the alleyway, not in the front yard, in the... In the front yard setback.
Can you go back to the survey, please? There's a lot of backyard, isn't there, near the alley also? I want to see if there's an alley. Okay, thank you. Any more questions? All right. Thank you, Austin. When I open up for public comment, step up to the microphone, state your name, please, for the record.
So, I think we should allow, um, the applicant to speak first if they are here, and then after that, we'll open up to public comment.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
You must be the applicant.
Yes.
No.
Oh, sorry.
Do we have the applicant here?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Nobody signed up as the applicant.
Okay. That makes more sense.
Yeah, so, sorry. Yeah, from moving forward, I guess we're gonna allow the applicant to speak first if they are here. If they're not here, we'll go ahead and open it up to...
Okay. Well, if I... If I get offline, just hit me upside the head.
No worries.
Go spitball or something. All right, sir, you can step back up. The applicant is not here. Okay.
So, this is Mr. Bob Ingram?
Bob Ingram? Oh, Bob Ingram.
Perfect.
Haven't seen Bob Ingram in a long time.
Uh, Bob Ingram, I'm a local real estate broker. Uh, I represent, uh, Mr. Ron Leon of Honolulu, Hawaii, who owns, uh, twenty-four seventy-two next door, and he's asked us to appear for Mr. Leon and speak against this, uh, variance. Uh, I have, uh, Mr. Leon's comments. If I could call my colleague Case Harden up to... I'm having a little trouble with my eyes. We'd like to enter, uh, Mr. Leon's comments.
That shouldn't be a problem. Step up and state your name for the record, please.
My name is Case Harden.
Okay.
And Mr. Leon said, "The extent of the variance requested is unreasonable, uh, and contrary to the intent and purpose of such setback laws. Uh, the purpose for the variance fails to provide justification for an egregious variance, and it sets an untenable precedent."
Thank you.
And it's my opinion that, uh, uh, Mr. Leon is correct. Uh, the, uh, the variance, uh, would definitely affect the value of, uh, Mr. Leon's property, which is twenty-four seventy-two cover, the house next door. Uh, there's, uh... Also, uh, we understand it's five foot from the curb, uh, and, uh, I'm not sure... I've always thought that there was a ten-foot setback for the city, but, uh, uh, be that as it may, uh, we want to, uh, uh, insert, uh, Mr. Leon's comments.
Okay, thank you. Who's next?
Okay. So, we also have a Brent Kester, I believe it is. Thank you.
First time. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Brent Kester. Uh, I own the house at, uh, twenty-four eighty-three Culver. And, uh, it's a... I don't know if you ever driven down Culver. It's a very quaint street, and you can see all the way down, all the front yards. The structure now sticks out, and it's like, you... It just stands out. It's just there. And so, I don't know what they could do aesthetically to make it blend in or... But it really does stand out, and, um, one of our... A previous place we lived, we had noticed the Airbnb industry would put up these carports in these parking because they needed more, uh, parking for their Airbnb that they were turning the house into. And so, I don't know if that's the goal for this house or if it's another change, but once the one started, it just snowballed, one after the other. And then it kind of really changed because some of them were longer, some of them were shorter, and I'm not a big fan of big government, you know, telling people what they can and can't do, but the gentleman did not get a permit, and I think if... And I've worked with the zoning department in the past, and they have been extremely helpful. Made sure all my ducks in a row, and all my i's are dotted, my t's are crossed, and we were able to successfully move on with projects. And I think if a simple phone call would have been able to get this ball rolling in the right direction and avoid some of this, and I... I am opposed to it, and, uh, I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
When did... When did they build it? How long did it build?
Um, I would... It still looks like new construction. I mean, it went up fast.
Did it? Six months, uh...
I would not... I don't know how long it's been. How long has it been up? What else know? This year.
This year?
I'm unsure.
This year?
Oh, yeah, this year.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all we had, signed up for that public comment? He can speak again if he'd like.
Case Harden again. I wanted to, uh, read, uh, Ms. Kester's, uh, comments on the issue. Uh, "This requested variance is very concerning. It will affect the aesthetics of the neighborhood negatively. It's extreme and unreasonable, and a big concern is the reason for the large carport. Will there be multiple cars parked there? Will be... Will there be large gatherings there? Uh, will there be multiple families living there? Uh, are they intending to use the residence as an Airbnb? It would be detrimental, uh, to the real estate and the neighborhood and the precedence it would set for the other variants, for other variances." Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need those for record? Do we need those letters for record?
Will we need those letters for record?
Since he read them in, no, that's reading them into the record.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment? Okay. I'm gonna close public comment, and then ask for the board's commentary on this, if any. If not, I'm gonna ask for a motion.
Uh, I would move that in the absence of the owner being here and in the absence of a permit, that we agree with the city's, uh, recommendation to deny.
I'll second that.
Have a motion to deny in a second. Board want to discuss it any further? Should I go to the vote? Let's go to the vote. All in favor? For Mr. Lester's, uh, motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries six zero. All right, moving on to item number... Five. ZBA twenty-four dash thirty-one, one forty-nine Los Lomas Drive, single-member district number one, Tommy Hebert, request for approval of variance to allow for a lot width of a hundred feet, a hundred foot in lieu of the required hundred and fifty feet for a ranch and estate R and E lot located at one forty-nine Los Lomas Drive. Mr. Reed?
Thank you, Austin Reed Planner. Uh, this comes to you out of the Nazworthy neighborhood. We are in district number one, Tommy Hebert's district. Uh, this is a ranch and estate R and E lot. Um, it's an acre and a half, and as you said, we have a request for approval of a hundred foot wide lot, whereas that hundred and fifty feet is what's required. So, we mailed out ten notices. We received one in favor and one opposed as well. Um, so, this lot is trying to plat. That's why they're coming before you. Uh, when a ranch and estate lot plats... Excuse me, when a ranch and estate, uh, lot plats, yeah. They're required to have a hundred and fifty feet. This lot only has a hundred feet, so they're asking for the variance. This is a lot with an existing home from the eighties. Sorry, I forgot to reset that. It's a learning process. Uh, so, the home and lot predate the zoning ordinance. Uh, the lot does taper in as well, about fifty feet narrower towards the front. Uh, the back of the lot almost does conform to that hundred and fifty-foot standards. Um, all the other lots within the immediate area are pretty much the same size, shape, orientation. Uh, granting a variance would simply establish what has already been there for many years, and it doesn't seem to adversely affect any of the surrounding properties either. Um, so, we think that it meets all the necessary criteria. Here's a photo of the front of the property, if it helps you. And then there's the plat as well. With that, we are recommending approval, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Can you go back?
So, the... That's the... That's what it... Thank you. Somebody turned it on for me. So, that is one forty-nine Los Lomas now, and they're gonna divide it in half? Is that correct?
No. So, we're plating it to match the current ownership lines. All we're doing is really establishing it as a legal lot. There's no further subdivision. This is pretty much how the property lines are right now.
Okay.
So, what would be the outcome if it were to be denied?
They wouldn't be able to plat their lot. Um, whatever they need to plat their lot for, I'm not sure, but, you know.
But it doesn't have to be planted, in other words?
Um, I'm not sure what their plans are.
I mean, to sell it, you have to plant it, I suppose?
From working with the gentleman, I believe they're trying to build a, um, barn or pool home, pool house, and in order to build anything on the lot, it has to be platted.
Yeah, there are certain triggers if you're doing construction that would require the lot to plat. Right now, it's in what we call abstract, where it's never been platted, so...
So, can you go back to the pictures of the properties that are there right now?
Sure.
Okay, so, it's already there. It's already fifty feet, correct?
It's a hundred feet wide.
I'm sorry?
It's a hundred feet wide, yes.
It's supposed to be a hundred and fifty feet.
Yes.
Okay. And that was built in the...
Eighties, from what I can tell.
Late seventies, early eighties. Okay. Thank you. And there's a house... Well, I guess I'm not there. There is a house to the left of the picture also?
Yes, there's a house on both sides. So, they're pretty much locked in with private property on both sides, so they would have to plat where they are now, really.
So, once they get this approved, their next step, obviously, is a building permit and on down the line, correct?
Their next step would be to get that plat, um, most likely through the planning commission, and then they can obtain their building permits.
Okay. So, they're liable to be back?
Perhaps.
More questions?
No.
Thank you, Austin.
Thanks.
I'm gonna open for public comment, if any.
We did have the applicant. Um, they can speak if there are questions. Uh, we also had one that was signed up to speak, but I don't think they're here anymore, so...
Okay. So, the applicant here? Step up and state your name for the record, please, sir.
My name is Ryan Edmiston. I live at one-four-nine Los Lomas.
Does it have any questions? The applicant? There being none, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, closed public comment. Okay, board. That's board commentary, if any. Discussion or motion to...
I'd just like to make a motion to approve it.
Okay, there's a motion to approve. Got a second? Any more discussion? All right, go to the vote. All in favor for the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There being none, motion carries six zero. Item number six. ZBA twenty-four dash thirty-two, eighty-three fifty South Country Club Road, single-member district number one, Tommy Hebert, request for approval of variance to allow for a lot width of a hundred and thirty-two feet in lieu of the required a hundred and fifty feet for a ranch and estate lot located at prox... Approximately eighty-three fifty South Country Club Road.
Can you also read in the next item, so we can do them together?
All right. Uh, item number seven, ZBA twenty-four dash thirty-three, eighty-three sixty South Country Club Road, single-member district one, Tommy Hebert, a request for approval of variance to allow for a lot width of a hundred and thirty-two feet in lieu of the required a hundred and fifty feet for a ranch and estate lot located at approximately eighty-three sixty South Country Club Road. All right.
Good afternoon, Ray Lineberry Planner, and we're going to do eighty-three fifty Country Club Road and then eighty-three sixty. Um, it is Nazworthy Neighborhood, District one, Tommy Hebert. It is zoned R and E. It is one acre, and they are requesting a hundred and thirty-two point eighteen feet wide instead of the hundred and fifty that is required. And then just to the south of it is eighty-three sixty Country Club Road, same neighborhood of Nazworthy. Tommy Hebert is the district, R and E. It is also one acres, and they are requesting a hundred and thirty-two point forty-nine feet instead of the hundred and fifty. And both of these lots are trying to plat so they can build a house on them. They are currently vacant. So, we mailed out eight notices. We received one in favor for each, and then technically, we received one opposed for each. However, it is unclear. It is from the applicant, and so, we think that they checked the wrong box, but we haven't been able to get a hold of them. So, it is unclear. But they signed all the paperwork, so...
Hmm, that's interesting.
Looking at the analysis, um, the lot tapers a little bit closer and making the fifty-foot narrower, or it makes it more of the hundred and thirty-two feet. Um, all of the lots within this area are about a hundred and thirty-two feet. If you just go up Country Club Road and measure all of them, they're about a hundred and thirty to a hundred and thirty-five feet. Um, so, granting the variance would simply establish it in its current existing state and does not seem to adversely affect any surrounding properties. Picture of nice, pretty, empty vacant lot. Um, this is the plat, and the reason I requested to do it together is because they are being platted. They are separate lots, but they are being on one plat, one final plat. Um, but if you notice, this one says a hundred and thirty-two point eighteen, and this one says a hundred and thirty-two point forty-nine. It says the same thing on the back. The width is the same on each one. Um, and that is what they're requesting instead of the hundred and fifty. And if you notice, you can kind of see a few above are also a hundred and thirty-two, like I said. Um, granted, they're not platted, but just so you know, there are others in the area. So, with that, staff is recommending approval on eighty-three fifty Country Club Road for the hundred and thirty-two point eighteen feet instead of the hundred and fifty, and also recommending approval on eighty-three sixty Country Club Road for the hundred and thirty-two point forty-nine feet in lieu of the hundred and fifty. With that, is there any questions?
Any questions?
And the applicant was here but is no longer, so if you have any questions, I can try to answer.
Did they oppose it?
We're hoping that they just checked the wrong box.
Okay. I don't have any question.
Isn't there... I... I don't really have a question about this, but is... Isn't there a, uh, ten percent rule where y'all can just approve things like this without sending it to the board?
There is a... Something called an administrative adjustment, um, and if there... And it's up to ten percent. If this had been a hundred and thirty-five, we could've gotten there, but being just outside, it's... It's hard to get there.
So, you don't have any wiggle room whatsoever?
I would be... I would be remiss if I tried to do wiggle room. Uh, that's really something that y'all would have that judgment to be able to do that I would not.
Is there... Is there any way of adjusting your percentage rate? Like, make it... Make it fifteen or twenty rather than ten?
There is through an ordinance change, yes.
Through an ordinance change?
Yes, sir. It specifically says in the ordinance that I've... We, as a staff team, has a ten percent... And in a case like this, where there's not able to gather more land, it makes sense to... That we would be able to do that administrative adjustment, but that's...
I'm just wondering on all the rest of those plots on that, if they're all gonna come in here for the same...
Yeah. If they're not built out and people are looking for homes and they're selling them, I mean, those... Those are always a chance, but...
Understand.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Sorry.
Not a problem.
On the ranch and estate, is there still the five-foot variance on either side requirement, or is it a larger...
It's actually a fifteen-foot, um, side yard setback.
Okay. On either side?
On either side, yes.
So, even though it's a smaller width of a lot, you're still gonna have the fifteen feet on either side, so their house is gonna have to accommodate that?
Yes. That's their plan as of right now.
Okay.
I did not know that. R and E's fifteen-foot side setback?
Because if y'all recall, probably about two months ago, we had one that they had... Remember the water well? And that was affecting how the house sat, and so, there was a side yard variance for five feet on that one.
911 coordinator and she's come over to planning to help us over in the planning division. And so, we're very excited about that. On a sad note, although she's not here today, Sherry Bailey is going to retire for the second time, but she's retiring at the end of this month. We will probably be having some sort of little reception for her towards the end of the month and we'll make sure you guys have invites in case you're able to attend. We'll have to kind of make sure we don't go over the three people at a time, but we can, we can work that out. We'll have a long enough time that you can come and go. Other than that, we're just working on things and planning, trying to just keep, keep these guys from not having to be too overworked as I keep adding more and more tasks to them. So, but Ray and Austin have done great. I'm very, very impressed with their work. They did a great job with doing the presentations today and doing the, the research and really trying to do what's best for our community. So, I, I think they're doing a great job for us. So, with that, if there's anything y'all are looking for from us between now and maybe the first of the year, this last quarter of the year, please let us know and we'll try to bring, whether it's education or something about the zoning ordinance that you want clarification on, just let us know and we'll be sure and bring it to the board and have a discussion.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Moving on to item nine, next meeting agenda, the next regular meeting. The zoning board adjustments is scheduled to begin at 1:30 PM on Monday, November the 4th in City Hall East Mezzanine Meeting Room. Item number 10, adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Motion carries six zero. Thank you.